Call the meeting to order for May 19th. First thing is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to approve the agenda. Any discussion or decisions? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Citizens to be heard. Do we have anything on? Nothing there? Okay. Approval of the payment of bills and vouchers. You've seen all those?
I'm of approval.
Second. We got a motion by Kevin, second by Jim, to approve the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Got minutes from May the 5th to be approved.
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Grant.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
With that, we'll go into our weekly update with Kathy McKay, our Public Health Director.
Thank you.
All good news this week.
All good news, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. On May 13th, the Governor announced that he wanted a new focus on rapid expansion of testing in our long-term care and assisted living facilities across Minnesota. And of course, I mentioned last week that the Red River Task Force, COVID Task Force, was also, that was one of their missions as well, to cover Cass County because their numbers were rising and they wanted testing in all of their facilities. So it matches up with this across-the-border testing. So in Minnesota, each facility needs to complete a survey that goes to the state. So it just gives them an idea of how many residents they have, how many staff, and kind of the needs in their facility. There's a few questions. And then whether they can, if they have a number of positive staff, that was some of the concern as they do the expanded testing. If they have a number of staff that are positive, then they have to take those out of the workforce. So they needed to have a plan about how would they ramp up staffing while, as we're doing this testing. There is some, there was an Emergency Management Assistant Compact for Minnesota requesting some federal assets and resources to help with that because they were concerned that it wouldn't be just in Clay County, it'd be across the state in all facilities. So they are able to help supplement some of that staffing. So that was a good thing, that if there's some significant staffing needs as we do a lot of the testing, that they have plans to ramp up and assist with those staffing needs. So a mobile team comes in and it's mostly made up of the National Guard, Minnesota National Guard, and they are people with a healthcare background. And they come in and actually do the testing in these facilities. So we started on Sunday and they come in, they provide the testing with some assistance from those facilities, the nurses. They do the swabbing. They brought the supplies in and then they also can deliver those back to the labs in Minnesota where they're going to be run. We assist by being the liaison with Minnesota Department of Health and we also assist the facilities with how those challenges might be met when they come in and do the swabbing. So one facility had a drive-through right by their facility for all the staff. So that worked out very well. The National Guard could swab them as they're driving through with their cars because they're calling all their staff in to get tested. So it worked very well. It was very efficient. And then they had the residents, they went from room to room to test those residents. So far, we've tested almost 1,000 residents and staff in those facilities. We're continuing to do the testing this week. There's a number of facilities that are going to be done. And then also next week. So we'll complete all of the assisted living and the long-term care facilities. So that's a very good thing. We're helping to move that process along. And so the first facility tested, I believe, was all negative. So that was very good. So we're moving right along with the same process on the Cass County side. Any questions about the testing or should I keep going?
I have a question. Are they testing for the diagnostic version of COVID-19 and the antibody as well as the testing?
No, they're not doing the antibody testing.
Ah, okay.
Just the COVID-19 test. The Minnesota Governor, of course, moved to Stay Safe Minnesota. So we're still recommending the covering with masks when you're out in public and wear your eye protection. Stay home if you're sick. The six-foot distancing. Check with your provider about getting tested if you're symptomatic. So that's continuing now. We have a symptom screener on our entrances to our facilities. And I also handed one out. It looks like this. So I handed, I didn't get you a copy, but it's on our doors and the department heads all have that. So when they have appointments that come in and when they're scheduling them, they can actually ask the questions. And it's the same questions that most places are asking, whether there's, they've had a fever, chills, a new cough, shortness of breath, new sore throat, new muscle aches, and a new loss of taste. So that'll be a pretty, it's the same symptom checker that they're using with MDH. So if any of those questions come up, then the departments can ask to reschedule that appointment because we don't want people coming in sick. We also ask if they can wear a cloth face covering. Now, we're not requiring that because our staff have been equipped to have masks. Our emergency manager got a number of masks. So are any of the departments can put a mask on if they think they're going to be closer than a six-foot distancing and if that individual doesn't have a cloth mask that they can wear. So hopefully, that will go smoothly and they'll follow all of those recommendations as we do the appointment, back to the appointment only.
Kathy, can I ask you, Mr. Chairman, the, so that's in all of Clay County facilities? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So how about here, we're in cases where, again, we have renter facilities and in the case of the courthouse, we have state-run agencies as well. Are they all following that same?
Yes, I have a staff person on the ones that are working with the court system. So they're making this recommendation. And Georgia did send this out also to all of the tenants. So they will all be following that. The dental office just opened up as well. So they have a pretty stringent screening process. They will take, their clients will be outside in their cars and they will let them know when they're ready to take them in as an appointment so they are not congregating in our lobby. So that's working out very well. But yes, Georgia shared the same thing across to all the tenants. So they should all be following that recommendation.
DMV the same way?
The DMV, Lori has a copy of that, so I'm sure that's been put on their door as well.
Maybe we'll get to that on Steve's report, but thank you.
Yep. So the Minnesota rates, the COVID number of rates have increased over 16,000. Now, this is in Minnesota. In Clay County, I think there was a question last week about, do we know how many are tested? They don't have a number of how many are tested, partially because they're getting tested, most of our tests are coming from the Fargo side, and they don't get the negative tests. So those don't, aren't reported back to the state. So there's no accuracy in knowing how many in Clay County have been tested. They're ramping up their testing across Minnesota. So so far, they're doing about 6,000 a day and they'll continue to increase that. The Minnesota case rate is now doubling every 12 days. So that's good. It was nine days prior to this. So rates were doubling every nine days. So we're seeing a little bit of a decline where they're doubling every 12 days. So that's a positive improvement. And as you can see from the graph, we've just listed our cases in Clay County. So what our number of cases have been, those that don't need isolation, then the number of deaths, we're now at 20 deaths. So the rates, we expect, as you know, to go up. It's really what we're looking at is deaths and hospitalizations that would really impact our healthcare systems. And on our last call, with the healthcare systems, they're able to still manage the numbers of hospitalizations and those in ICU in their facilities. So that's good. We've never had to ramp up where they needed another facility to take care of any of the hospitalizations. So that's positive.
Kathy, what is the, how many beds are being used right now in the FM area, the ICU rate?
You know, I don't have the ICU rates. We'll hear that on our call this week, but I don't have those rates right now or a number of hospitalizations. And we don't directly get that, so I have to ask, I have to make the request to the healthcare facilities. So we don't have that current rate. So last Friday, we received a health alert the state issued, and you probably heard a little bit about this. It's a mysterious illness that's linked to the coronavirus and we're seeing it in children, not here so far. So the CDC issued this alert about this inflammatory, it's kind of a rare inflammatory syndrome in children, and it can be deadly. So medical professionals in a number of states are looking at more than 200 cases. Now, in Minnesota, again, I haven't heard of any or in North Dakota, but it may be that if they had a case, they haven't presented that information publicly. So it's affecting those that are 21 and under. So it's actually children and young adults. And so it's just a multi-organ inflammatory situation. So they're just watching that. That's something new and it's linked to the COVID-19. So we're watching that. I believe there's been three deaths in children with this multi-inflammatory syndrome. So more to come on that. We just received the health alert late last week on that. And I handed out the safe, safely adjusting the dials. So this is something, again, that the Governor has talked about, is where we are at. So if you look at the workplace settings as he's, as we are moving the dial to increase those places, workplace settings, and it's social settings. So, you know, we've been just, critical services were open and then some curbside pickup and delivery. And so now we're moving the dial as the numbers are, as the data is showing. So he's watching these dials. So in workplace settings, you can see in the social distancing, social settings, we're still saying 10 people or less. It's sometimes challenging because North Dakota's a bit ahead of us where they're opening, they've opened up places and they're saying gatherings of more than 10 can happen. So Minnesota's just a little bit, not quite at that spot yet. I know they're having discussions this week about places of worship and opening up, when are they going to be doing the ability to do some kind of face-to-face in some of those places of worship? And then, of course, school settings, it was distance lighting for this year. So when they talk about safe adjusting of the dials, that's the example of what they're using. Is there any questions?
Yes, I have a question, Kathy. You mentioned a word and then you said inflammatory syndrome. What was the first word that you said in that?
It is multi-organ inflammatory syndrome. So it can affect multi-organs in kids and the young teens and young adults. So multi-organ kidneys, you know, those kinds of things. Respiratory.
So is that a new acronym that we'll be hearing about?
Yeah, if this increases, they're really watching these numbers because CDC has noticed that there's been a bit more that have been identified. So it's a rare inflammatory syndrome maybe is what you're thinking, but it can affect multi-organs in kids. So it's something they're watching and they're playing post, you know, watching and being a close.
Can I have a follow-up to Jim's question?
Yeah.
So, and I know I'd heard too that there were three deaths associated to that. Do they know, and did you say there was about 200? Is that across the United States now?
Right, correct, yep, 200 across.
And do we know where those deaths associated to underlying conditions as well or?
You know, I don't have that information. I can try to find that. We don't, I haven't heard if they were having underlying health conditions or even if that was reported, so.
Because, you know, in the vast majority of other deaths that this virus has had, it's been other, associated with other conditions along with it.
Right, right. And so I'm not sure about that, especially, and I don't have the ages of those three deaths either.
Yeah.
So that would be another thing to, I can see if I can find any information on those deaths.
I think they were kind of on the New York area, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, I think so too.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions about what we might be doing here in Clay County?
Any more word from the state on contact tracing?
Oh, yes. We, the state, so we have, there's two things. One is contact investigation, and those are following those people that are positive and working with those individuals. And then contact tracing is the one where we're following up with any of the contacts that they may have provided. The contact investigation, we have one individual, and I think I mentioned our community health board, so Otter Tail, Becker, and Wilkin. We each have someone that's been trained, one or two individuals. So, for example, Wilkin doesn't have many cases, so they can help Clay County in our contact investigation. So that's what we've just been trained for. The contact tracing, Minnesota Department of Health has to ramp up that training before they're going to provide the training on contact tracing. So we have contact investigation going on. They have added additional, so each of the counties are taking, across the state, if they're able to, are taking some of that. So it's freeing up a lot of the Minnesota Department of Health individuals that were working on all of this. And they've ramped up to about 1,400. So they have 1,400 across the state. They keep adding more individuals. So as this ramps up and we get the training, we're still waiting to get the training on contact tracing, we can add more people to our list.
So the purpose behind contact tracing, and of course, is to notify people they've been around somebody who's had it? And is it then the recommendation that those people self-isolate for the 14-day period?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's a lot better than having to have everybody go back to doing it?
That's correct.
That's the whole reason behind it, right?
That's the whole reason, yes, yes. So, yeah, that's a good thing. So we'll continue to do that. Also, Family Healthcare is doing, they started last week and they're doing testing on all of their patients and then vulnerable populations. So for instance, anyone in the homeless shelter that would want to go over to Family Healthcare. So they're doing that this week and I believe they're doing it next week. We did get the information out. They informed all of their patients so they can come for some testing, but it would be limited to just those, those that are patients and those that are vulnerable. So we did get it to the homeless shelter in case there's individuals that would want to go get tested, so. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, for the update again. And continuing with that same policy, we're going to lower our employee return-to-work policy that the PIC committee has been working on for the last couple of weeks. And I think these were handed out last week, our policy, and Steve will take care of that.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, thank you for allowing me to be here this morning. Just wanted to follow up here with our list last week. As you're aware, we, this board did approve our safely return-to-work policy. Now, with the uncertainty of whether or not Governor Walz was going to extend our stay-at-home order, we wanted to be prepared and ready should that happen. He did move into the stay-safe order effective 11:59, and his stay-at-home order ended at 11:59 on Sunday night. And so Monday morning, we went into our stay-safe ordinance order. Last week, I confirmed or had conversations with our board chair about our policy of returning to work, and we made the determination that as of yesterday, we would open up to appointment-only, limiting access. Our buildings continue to be locked, but our citizens have the opportunity to make different appointments. We also have access online now, so not only can, are they able to call in for appointments, but they're also ordered, able to make online appointment reservations after hours. And so that was certainly beneficial. Yesterday was a fairly light day. We did see some appointments as early as 8 o'clock yesterday. So people were utilizing the online access. And so we brought back just a few additional employees. Employees who continue to have the ability to work remotely are still doing that, but we're heavy, we have enough employees to make sure that we are meeting the expectations of all of our potential appointments. A few different things. One of the things that we saw in the Recorder's Office was probably the busiest office yesterday. One of the items that the state had given approval for marriage licenses to be done through the mail. Since we are now open, the Recorder's Office is no longer doing mail marriage licenses. You have to come in person. The Veterans Service Office has, was closed by order of the Veterans Administration at the state level. Yesterday, they began having face-to-face meetings again at the Family Service Center offices. And just to follow up some of the questions that Kathy brought up, our renters did have been a part of our discussions throughout the process over the last three weeks. And Georgia's done a great job communicating with them and talking about the expectations or our expectations. And they, in all cases, gladly, gladly, I guess, are willing to comply with how our operations are here. Effective tomorrow, Motor Vehicle is going to be open for all services. What we are asking our employees, or our citizens, excuse me, is the focus, of course, what we'd like over the next 30 days is to focus on those tabs, title transfers, IDs that are going to be expiring in the next 30 days. But again, we will be offering full service. One of the things that we worked with Lori and Chelsea Servester out there is during this time is trying to look at ways that we can be more effective and efficient out there. And so what we're going to be doing, I believe, starting tomorrow, we're going to do a trial run on the ability to make reservations for real ID and enhanced IDs and see what types of impacts those have. And if that's something that can be successful, we'll look at potentially adding other types of service out there. And so our citizens aren't going to have to spend potentially as much time as they've had previously. And so we're very pleased and excited about that. And again, out at the vet, excuse me, at Motor Vehicle, we are going to be, the policy that they have is going to be very similar to what we did prior to being closed. Our citizens are going to be met outside of the building. They're going to be getting the information to make sure they have everything. And if there's a kiosk open, they'll be able to go in. If there's not, they'll be, they'll give the information to the staff person, phone number, driver's phone number, email address, some sort of contact information, and we'll have them, ask them to wait back by their vehicle. And so we won't have people congregating in front of the building. So, again, this is a work in progress. Well, the PIC is meeting this afternoon or this morning after board. We'll continue to evaluate what processes we're working. We'll take further director from Kathy and her staff, whether or not we move forward, stay the same, or if we have to retract on some of the things that we're doing. But we'll continue to provide updates to this board as we move forward. So with that, I would stand for any questions.
Well, looks like we've got no questions and Walz is going as, working after one day anyway, so hopefully it keeps on going.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. With that, we'll go on to Kirk, looking to fill a manager position and a truck driver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you all again and everybody's healthy. The first position I'd like to talk to you about is the manager at the landfill. We talked at the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and also I talked to Kevin and Grant, who are commissioners for the Solid Waste Committee. And also I talked to PIC last week about this as well. And essentially, what this landfill manager position is for is just to be somebody responsible during the, at the landfill. As you know, we're going to be doing quite a bit of construction out there this year, and I think it's really, really important to have somebody available to represent the county. And so this is the crest I'm proposing. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer any questions we Not all at once, please.
What's the process going to be?
Essentially, I think what we're, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, what I'd like to do is I'd like to try and have an interview panel and interview the people that are interested. I know that there are going to be three people out at the landfill that are very interested in this position. The way the position is designed is that it would be filled by one of those three people and it's just additional duties that they would have and additional ones that they currently
So would that, one of those three get, is there a backfill of that then or?
Mr. Chairman, that's something that we have to determine whether or not there would be.
Okay. Very good.
Make a motion to approve the request with a backfill option as well.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny, second by Jim, to fill the manager position at the landfill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. With that, we'll move on to the waste truck driver.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as I think Commissioner Campbell mentioned at the last meeting, the leachate generation has just been going through the roof out there. To give you an example, during 2019, the first quarter in 2019, we produced and treated 264,600 gallons of leachate. In the first quarter for 2020, we've treated 812,727 gallons. So as you can see, there's a significant increase. We're not the only ones that had the increase in leachate. I've talked to City of Fargo and talked to Polk County. We had an extremely wet fall, as you know, and some heavy snow early in the winter, and that's what's really contributed to this. What we've been doing is that we've been using a private hauler to help us keep up. Right now, we only have one truck driver out there and one semi-tractor. And so what's happened is that for the first quarter, we spent $22,000 in hauling costs just by itself. So the costs are very significant. With the construction of the cell that we're going to be doing here this summer, we're going to have, continue to have additional leachate. I don't think it's going to be as much as what we have had so far, but I anticipate that we'll have probably three to four trips, five days a week, to take this leachate to be treated at the Fargo wastewater treatment plant. To give you an idea, essentially, $441 per load is the cost to treat the wastewater. That's how much it costs to treat it. And the hauling costs were basically $250 per trip, and we hauled about 6,300 gallons per trip. So that adds up fairly quickly. And I think that by adding a truck driver, we already have a tanker truck. I talked to Dave about possibly using a semi-tractor at the, from the Highway Department. I think that's a possibility. And I think we've also talked to a private individual about leasing a truck, and that's a possibility as well. Long-term, once we get the bonding money, once we get that, we'll, we're going to probably purchase our own semi-tractor. We'll have to buy one of those because some of the activities that will be associated with the transfer station, we'll have more. So with that, if you have any questions, I stand ready to have any.
Go ahead, Jim.
Would you explain for the folks at home what leachate is?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
There's a lot of people wondering right now.
It's basically landfill coffee. If you think about the garbage in the landfill is coffee, what happens is what What happens is water and snow percolates through the garbage and the material at the bottom that's collected and treated is leachate. So that's basically what it's called. We have to treat, or we have to test the leachate on a regular basis to make sure that the material is, things that City of Fargo can adequately treat. We've talked to the City of Moorhead about trying to treat the material, but they have a different system and they can't treat it. So we use Fargo. In the past, we've had some issues, or you've had some issues, I wasn't here then, but there were some issues with the leachate. And it was taken down to Pigs Eye, so it was taken down to the Twin Cities and treated down there, which gets to be very expensive, obviously. You've heard this again from me, and I'll repeat it again. Hopefully, this won't be a problem while I'm here, but I'm sure it will be at some point in time. You've heard about PFAs. And PFAs, essentially, it's stuff in, it's everywhere. Basically, they're forever chemicals. And they're trying to figure out how to treat this material. And it's very, very difficult, very, very expensive, and they don't really have a good way to treat it. At some point in time, it's going to be a significant issue in treating this leachate. And it'll be a very, very expensive thing for the county to do. So just be aware that's on the horizon.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the request is here for a second driver, right?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes, that's exactly right.
I guess, I guess what I would, you know, because this leachate is kind of a, you know, it might have to do with a seasonal wet condition that might not always be there. Well, I certainly understand the need for it. But what I'm getting at is where we also talked about doing a backfill for the hire, for the manager position. I don't know that that is creating a lot of additional work. I think what we're looking for in the manager position is the one who has to be on site, who can make the decisions. So I think, I think before, I think before we would suggest to go ahead and do a backfill position on what we hire for the manager, that if we're going to do this second driver, we can, we should see how that might be able to incorporate to maybe, in addition to taking those runs, what other, what other work might have to be made up by the person who has been promoted to the manager. Do you see what I'm saying?
No, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I understand exactly what you're saying. And I think that's a, you know, a bridge we have to cross at some point in time, obviously. I think that, right now, I think there's a real need to, you know, it's not a want, it's a, it's a real need that we, we need to have this. I think the savings that we can provide are significant. As far as any kind of backfilling, yeah, it's something that we may have to take a look at.
Well, I, and again, I, but I think before we do the backfill, I support the driver position. But before we just go and hire a fourth person at the landfill in addition to the driver, we need to see how this is working out with this.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I agree 1,000%.
Mr. Chair, part of the reason I included the backfill in that option is I know how different skill sets are. And so if you hire someone that doesn't necessarily know how to operate larger equipment, or if the person that you hire for the manager position is already out there operating the larger equipment, you have to have people that are able to do that. And so with, without causing a hiccup in terms of how process works out at the landfill, that's why I did that.
Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, honestly, the greater concern I have, and this is very, very significant, is what happens if the coronavirus hits out there. I mean, we're going to have some serious issues. We're pretty lean as it is. I mean, we only have four guys basically out there. And it, it's an issue that keeps me up at night. So that's one thing that I'm really, really concerned about.
I think we discussed at the PIC committee too, that you weren't sure you were going to do a backfill yet anyway, so.
Mr. Chairman, no, I, there's no foregoing conclusion that there is going to be a backfill. I think the three people that are in consideration for this position are all really good candidates. And I think any or all of them would do a very good job. And it really depends on what the interview panel decides fits our needs best.
Just from my own information, this leachate, if you don't haul it out continuously, what happens? Does it pool up somewhere out there, or?
Mr. Chairman, that's exactly what happens. What happens is it's collected in a tank. We have two tanks out there. One is a 40,000 gallon tank and the other one is 20,000 gallon tanks. I don't know if you remember from our trip.
I remember the trip.
Yeah, I think it took four or five years off your life, and I apologize for that. But essentially, what happens is that there's quite a bit of leachate that gets on the liner. And that extra weight on the liner can cause either a liner failure, which could compromise your groundwater as you move forward, or it can, you know, cause it to fail completely, which really causes major problems. So that's the issue and why it has to be collected and why it has to be taken away.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we're working on the truck driver here right now. Any recommendations?
I'll make the motion.
We've got a motion to hire a solid waste truck driver.
Second.
And we got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Very good, thank you. Just one other note here, it was kind of a busy Sunday. As you know, the bonding bill, we didn't quite get there. It's really, really interesting, as always, it's a very interesting process. We're in the House, bonding bill for $8.5 million, that failed. And we're also in the Senate bill, but the Senate bill was only for $7 million. So they, they cut us by $1.5 million. In talking to the folks, and I talked to everybody that I could think of on Sunday, and it seemed that there was some confusion on how those Senate numbers actually came together. The number that I've heard in discussing it with the folks down there, they think that there will be a final bonding bill. And they think the magic number is going to be between 1.2 and 1.5 billion dollars. So we're working, still working pretty hard to try and get, get the Senate to understand that our seven million should be 8.5. And any help you guys can provide would be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kirk. With that, we'll go into the highway department with Dave and Justin. First thing we've got on there is the approval of the purchase of tandem axle truck off of Minnesota State Bid.
Good morning.
Morning, Dave and Justin.
So last fall, we kind of got ourselves in line to replace our trucks. We've got, we do have eight full-time trucks. And we've got eight that are in the internal service fund. We have eight additional trucks that are, have the money pulled out already, so to speak. They used to be part-time trucks. We've been kind of increasing to our full-time staff a little bit more. But we still have part-time snow drivers in Felton, Yulin. We got one in Holly and one in Barnesville. So we still have four part-time drivers for these trucks. But last fall, like I said, it takes quite a while to get in line for these trucks. In fact, the build date for the box, if you were to buy a truck today, is like July of 2022 would be the earliest. You'd be able to get your truck in to get the box and hydraulics and those things done. The truck was kind of earmarked for Clay County last fall. We went and looked at one of the demo models they had, but it ended up being a smaller truck than we, than we have been buying. So it didn't work out. So they earmarked one for us, and it's currently at the Towmaster Center, I guess, for getting the box and hydraulics and snow equipment put on. This would replace our current unit 122, current unit one, which is, it's a truck that was bought in 2005. That one would be traded in. Unit 123 would go down into the part-time status. We would keep that one and use the internal service funds for unit 123. We've got a little over $250,000 in the internal service fund for replacement. We did get a $14,000 trade-in amount for the unit 123, which is the O6 Volvo. And the new, the new truck, as kind of I listed here, the chassis itself from my state truck center is 118,635. And then for the box, hydraulics, and snow equipment, to make it equipped like our other ones in the fleet from Towmaster is 110,336.
Okay, so now we're looking at replacing 122. To replace 123, okay. We discussed this too at the highway tracking committee to replace this truck. We've moved it at that time. Any further discussion or any motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can just comment, you know, when we look back in our highway tracking, it also did show that with what we have in the internal service fund and the proposed service fund, proposed trade-in on the Volvo or sell, is that?
Correct.
We would still be looking at $41,000 remaining in the internal service fund. I don't see where you.
I think that changed to 39, I see.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, it's on the back there, okay.
I got a new trade number since we had our highway meeting. So the trade number we did have was 16,000, and that was prior to last winter's usage.
14,000, okay.
And after we used it and put the miles on it, they adjusted that down to 14,000.
I did not see the back attachment.
Okay.
My fault.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just have a comment. I appreciate the fact that we have that internal service fund. I think it's, it's helpful, especially for purchases like this. But I will caution us going forward, since we don't know what the full scope of what the COVID dilemma will have on budgets going forward, just to be cautious about these big ticket items right now.
Is this truck, the one Kirk was just talking about using, going to the highway department, utilizing that truck, is this the truck that they could utilize?
No, this would be different. This is like a tandem axle with the box on the back. The one Kirk was mentioning was a semi tractor. We've got, we just purchased one about a year and a half ago. Is more of our, you know, it's a little bit bigger one. It's a semi tractor essentially is what Kirk was talking about. And then we've got an international that we've had for 20-plus years. And I believe that one is the one that we're hoping that can hook onto their, their water tank for them. Or leachate tank, I guess.
All right. Any motion or whatever?
Move to approve the purchase.
Got a motion to approve the purchase by Grant, excuse me, Kevin.
Second.
And we got a second by Grant. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Okay, go ahead with the truck.
Our next item is to discuss in, I'd like to recommend a little increase to our royalty payment for the county gravel materials. We've got two current county pits, the Felton pit, typically called the 108 pit, which we are actively mining in for the annual maintenance gravel on county roads, as well as it's available for contractors to sell gravel to townships. And that's exclusively the use. We do have a pit on County Road 26. We're currently not mining there. There's about one more good year's worth of gravel crushing available. We have to try to work that in our budget, so it's not in the 2020 budget for it. But this royalty discussion would apply to that one as well. And the current royalty, and it's been in place 20-plus years, is, it's set for 30 cents a yard or 42 cents a ton. And that applies in basically two situations. First situation would be for sale of material to townships. So that would apply to that sale, as well as when we, when we offer this location for gravel crushing as an option for contractors to come in. We use it as kind of an equalizer, because any given, any given gravel producer, if they go onto private property, they have to pay a royalty to that landowner. And we've, you know, it wouldn't be fair if there was no royalty applied to the county pit. So what we do is, let's say they bid $10 a yard, we add the royalty to it when we compare on the abstract. But we don't, obviously, we don't charge ourself that number, you know, we don't pay for it. But, so it's kind of an equalizer. The 30 cents per yard or 42 cents a ton is a number that hasn't been looked at or discussed for, like I said, over 20 years. I made a few phone calls, as well as we discussed it internally. And some of the things that I found out are, you know, I asked the question, what is a typical royalty? And it's not, it's not super simple. There's a lot of things that kind of go into it. I mean, there's a general range on what you might assume in Clay County. But from what I kind of found out, location of the pit to where most of the material's going is a big thing. So obviously, in our area, it's how far it is from Fargo-Moorhead is kind of one of the main factors that kind of determine royalties. The other thing that has a, has a pretty big impact is what kind of materials in there? Is it fill sand? Is it gravel? Class five gravel, compatible type material? Is it concrete aggregate? You know, that's kind of a highly sought-after type of material? So that's the other thing that kind of comes into play. And the third thing that kind of comes into play in our pit is, can you make class five out of, you know, in some pits, you can dig right in the bank and you've got your sand material, you've got your clay material for binder, and then you've got your rocky and aggregate material. If it's all right there, it's real easy to produce, which would be the ideal pits. And that's kind of, you know, when it come to class five gravel, that's, that's, that's what we would be looking at. Our county pit is getting more and more harder to produce in because the aggregate material is down in the water, so that's got to be dug out. There's all kinds of sand. It's a very, very sandy beach ridge kind of an area from the Glacial Lake Agassiz. So sand is very prevalent and easy to get to. Probably the hardest component of class five is the clay. There's not a lot of clay out there. And up until about five, six years ago, there was talks of actually importing clay. And I think 20 years ago, they did import clay into this pit before I took over. We have since, on the south side of the pit, there was a pretty big bank there that we've been kind of working on and being able to acquire clay. But what you need to do is you had to truck haul the clay all the way across the pit to an area where you pulled the material out of the water and you set your crusher up there. And then the sand is right on the, kind of the east bank is where the main sand source is. And then you can put it all together. To make a long story short, I don't think our, I don't feel that our, our pit should garner the highest royalty out on the market. And I think somewhere is between maybe a dollar a ton, you know, 60, 70, 80 cents up to a dollar a ton is kind of a going rate. But after our discussions, I would recommend we look at increasing it from 30 cents a yard to 50 cents a yard. Or, you know, like I said, it's kind of a metric English deal, but 42 cents a ton or 70 cents a ton. 50 cents a yard or 70 cents a ton is the exact same royalty. It just depends on what unit of measure you're using, so.
Is this going to affect the townships at all?
It is going to have a little effect on the townships, because their, their cost to the county is going to go up by 20 cents a yard, if approved.
Just to clarify, the numbers you just said were different than the numbers that you're proposing on our sheet. It said you're proposing 70 cents a cubic yard or a dollar a ton.
I guess I wonder if I didn't have.
Because the current rate is 30 cents a cubic yard.
Right.
Or 42 a ton, correct?
Yeah. I think what I did is, I think I sent out a sheet to Colleen and changed. And, you know, I had further discussions and changed that, and she must have got the wrong one possibly, or I didn't get the right one out, but I guess.
So are you intending on applying that as of today or as of?
So I guess that, we talked a little bit at highway track meeting, and we felt at best this would only apply to 2021. Right. For 2020.
Is the priority approval?
Correct, yeah, exactly. There may be some townships that are still kind of in the, in the bidding process, and we didn't feel it made any sense to start 2020, it'd be 2021. And then, sorry for the inaccuracy there, but my request would be for 50 cents a yard or 70 cents a ton, so.
And to just to follow up, I think part of our discussion was, is we could end this fall, we have our township meetings, and we'll be inside with Dave, and then we have the opportunity to provide information on your 2021.
Okay, you're saying, you're looking at 50 cents a cubic yard, 70 cents a ton.
Right.
Now, because of highway tracking, we had the other figure also. Now, because of Highway Tracking, we had the other figure also there.
And I just want to make sure whatever we set it at is fair. If we haven't approved this for twenty years, it's, you know, obviously, we're behind in that, but are we shortchanging what it really is worth?
And I guess, I think, like I said, I think my thought process was, based on, on the pit, the way, the way it's currently used, I didn't, I, I think the higher, a higher royalty would maybe apply to a pit where you can go in there and just grab everything you need right there, and it's fairly simple to manufacture gravel, but this pit's not that way at all. I mean, you've got to dig the material out of the water, so you have to have either a long-reach backhoe or a drag line or something along those lines, and then the clay is, it's very, very difficult to find. There's, you know, uh, one of the gravel haulers that typically does bid out for county gravel out of there, he outsourced and actually bought gravel at another pit based on the limited amount of clay, so it's just a little, little history there that it's, until we, until we are, uh, kind of get our ducks in a row out there, we're looking at trying to expand the pit a little bit to the south where that ridge is, but there's some environmental issues. We're working with planning and zoning on that a little bit to get permission to continue to move to the south with our bank, but, uh, based on all the environmental issues out there, it's just, uh, there's some things we got to do, is some meetings with the DNR, possibly an EAW, uh, takings permit based on what's going on down there. There's butterfly habitat down there, and there's been some restricted areas, so, um, Frank and I and Matt have met out there last year at the DNR. Um, we're in the process of seeing, you know, we did, we went out there with our, uh, surveying forces, and, uh, we identified all the boundaries, and we thought we'd have one more meeting to see, um, if the area is, if we can only use part of it or if we can use all of it and continue to the south. If we can only use a small portion of that, it might not be worth going through the EAW process on it all, so.
Well, you're not taking stuff out of the water right now.
We, we did that about three years ago. We pulled out quite a bit, and we have not, we have yet to touch that, so...
Right. The people that are taking stuff out are not pulling it out of the water. The stuff is already up on top.
Right, yep, as of right now. The other, and the other thing that we've done a lot, you know, the pit's quite old, so prior to, I think it's prior to the county getting it, you know, there was all kinds of miscellaneous piles that are put up, and we've cleaned up a lot of those in an effort to basically, you know, utilize everything we can. So that's the other thing is, you know, that's, it does cost a little bit more, but I think it's good management of your pit, so a lot of these older piles, uh, we've finally gotten to a point now where we're digging into those, and, and, okay, so we've been utilizing some of those sources for that, that binder or the fines, they call it. We've been utilizing these old piles, cleaning things up, and, uh, there was a bunch of old asphalt there, and two years ago, we brought a, a machine in and we crushed it up and blended it, so we've been utilizing everything we can out there to kind of extend things and, which has kind of given us a couple of years of not using our material out of the water for crushing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I know, uh, I know we talked about this at the Highway Tracking, and, and I know we, we did agree that this should probably be done, but the, the more that I think about it and based on, um, on, um, our administrator's comments from just a couple minutes ago about us wanting to inform, uh, maybe at the township meeting in the fall, because this isn't going to be implemented till twenty-twenty-one, uh, maybe what we ought to do is just defer the action to do this until we've actually talked to the townships. Uh, I, I, I think, you know, um, it's, I, I would rather say, this, this is what we want to do. What are your thoughts? As opposed to, this is what we've done, uh, live with it. And, and so I guess it's, it's, to me, it's a better way of, of having open communication and maybe getting some input on the part of the townships as well. So I, you know, I just think it's not going to hurt us to maybe delay the final decision on this till fall.
Right.
That's, I guess that's my comments on it. I, I think it, I'd rather go to the township, say, here's what we're thinking of doing. What are your thoughts? And if there's a, if there's an awful lot of, you know, black on it, then we should know about it.
Right. No, I got no problem with that. It, uh, the other thing that might give me a little time to do is to figure out what would the impacts be, so maybe I can work with some of the townships that are getting material out of our pit and kind of quantify that. We, we, uh, we do get those numbers at the end of the year, so I should be able to quantify that, and then, because that might be the first question they have as well, what, what does this mean financially? So, uh, at the same time, we could share that with them as well. I got no problem with waiting.
I appreciate that you looked at it. You know, I think we do need to change it for sure.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah, it's not a real urgent matter. You're very correct.
Mr. Chair, I, I would move that we table item number, agenda item number B under the highway.
Okay, we got a motion to table item B, which is to set the royalty payment from, for solid, uh, materials sold out of the Felton County pit.
When, excuse me, when it, when is the, when is the, is it September when they have the?
It's usually not till November.
November, correct.
Okay, um, so I, I think my motion would be to table till November. I think, I think typically when you table, you have a time period, so.
Okay, we got a motion to table this item till November.
Second.
That's motion by Kevin, second by Grant. Any further discussion?
I just, I just want to make sure that we follow the, I mean, we'll have to remove it from the table once we have that, once you bring it back, so just remember that this is how we did that, so we can do it appropriately.
Gotcha.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion passes. Okay, bring it back to November then, or after, after the township.
So maybe in October, I'll bring it to the Highway Committee. We'll refresh things a little bit prior to the November Township meeting.
You can talk to those townships before.
Right.
I mean, if it, if we need something for bids later on in the winter, you need to have this done before then. You can quickly circle back.
Maybe we can even reach out prior to the township meeting, so.
Yeah, I think that would probably be.
And I think, I think in terms of making sure that we follow the protocol, I think, Steve, we can even probably have Colleen put in the, in the calendar right now to, you know, that we had a tabled motion that would need to be removed for... I agree, it's can be something that could be easily forgotten if we don't.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to reports. Jim, you want to start it out today?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Wednesday, I attended the COVID-nineteen press conference along with Public Health Director Kathy McKay, and we gave our, our, uh, reports and, uh, along with the other entities in Cass County and Fargo and Moorhead. On Friday, I attended the virtual meeting of the Early Childhood Initiative, and we heard reports from providers and stakeholders. That is my report.
Hey, Grant.
Uh, you had the PIC meeting last week. Uh, we already discussed the return-to-work policy and, uh, and, uh, solid waste, uh, staffing issues. Uh, had the Northwest Regional Radio Board on Wednesday, and, um, that was mainly just updates and, uh, information on grants that are available and that type of thing. Had a meeting with Joel Paulson, the Executive Director of the Diversion Authority, on updates on the diversion and, and litigation that's going on, and we had a meeting, the Moorhead-Clay County Joint Powers Board to, on some property acquisition. We had a special meeting on Friday. That was it for me.
Hey, Jenny.
Yeah, last week I had the Cass-Clay Food Partners meeting. We talked about, uh, issues that are arising because of the COVID issue. Significantly, you're processing for, uh, animal products, and so discussing what ordinances we could look at to see if that could please regulations for those providers, particularly Clay County has some larger KFOs, and so just to make sure we can help with that if we are able. Commissioner Campbell and I attended a meeting for our, with our administrator for the subcommittee that we were appointed to, to look at Buffalo watershed, Buffalo Red watershed needs. I had the Soil and Water Conservation District meeting, good updates from all of the staff there. They're continuing to be quite active with their duties. They are in the process of finishing up their larger tree orders, so, um, the good outpouring of issues there. And then Friday, I attended the, um, Cass, uh, Lakes and Prairies Community Action Housing Advisory Board that I was appointed to for the, um, board, and just updates on how they're continuing to work with clients during the current issue, and, uh, discussed the Clay County return-to-work policy and how it will affect their, um, providers and the family service. Yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health, uh, Board of Directors meeting. We had good updates from all of the administrative, uh, positions. They are continuing to look at how COVID is affecting their programs. There are some, a couple of programs because of the school issues that, that are really kind of at a standstill and just making sure that they're allocating staff time wisely. Uh, they did decide to delay the county budget requests, uh, until late summer just so they can get a better picture on how COVID is affecting the different programs and what programs are vital and which ones may not be. Uh, they were able to get one of the, um, small grants from the, the government in terms of, um, workforce, uh, so they were able to keep everyone on until at least June, so hopefully this, they're able to get people back to work sooner rather than later, but access remains good, especially in the Clay County sites, so that's a promising thing. That concludes my reports.
Hey, Kevin.
On, um, Tuesday, May twelfth, we had our Highway Tracking Committee meeting. Uh, we did, in addition to what we, um, talked about today and approved today, we had a, uh, discussion regarding CASA One, uh, construction update and right-of-way issues, and, uh, to date, there, not all right-of-ways have been issued and it, uh, or been acquired, so it, it may or may not, um, mean that that project can go forward, uh, this summer. You know, there, there's a possibility that it could be delayed till next year, which would just mean we would flip some things, you know, within our five-year plan. Uh, we talked about the Felton County pit issues, and we, uh, we talked about our five-year plan, and I think, I think the process we're, we normally have a separate public input meeting, and I think what we recommend that we do this year would be to include that public input meeting as part of a board meeting, just to kind of, because we're so late already, and I think you're looking at the first Tuesday in June or something, is that?
No, second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday in June for that. A little bit later than normal, but we kind of know the plan, and, and, uh, so it's just a public input meeting on that. We did have some discussions regarding the Glendon Turn Lane project. Uh, there's a turn lane project from what was done on Highway ten there, and, uh, there's some issues with school buses being able to turn properly, and, and, uh, that's Frank's area. Maybe he can expand that out if he wants to in his report. On Wednesday afternoon, we had a, um, Mayor Jed and I, who both serve on the MCC JPA, we, we met with staff regarding, there's anticipated that we might see the, the, uh, new clomar, uh, come out in June, and when that happens, when the clomar comes out, it, it, we're going to be able to be more definitive on, on, uh, what lands are impacted and how much, and so with that being said, that we're kind of doing some early plans on, on letters that could go out to the landowners that would be impacted, and talk to them about what their options are and processes are going forward, knowing we'll have a little bit more detailed information on that. So, so that was on, on, uh, Wednesday. Uh, Thursday morning, the fourteenth, Commissioner Mullerjo and I, we did meet. We're doing some follow-up to, um, what we reported early on on some Buffalo Red River watershed, um, issues going on, and there'll be more to come on a upcoming agenda item. That afternoon, or, excuse me, at noon that day, then I also attended, uh, the Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting, and not really much to report there, that everything was going well, even that, again, they're experiencing the same thing that all entities are with, uh, doing most things virtually, so nothing really urgent to report there. On Friday morning, we, uh, we did have the MCC JPA's meeting, a special meeting was called because we had some, again, we had two more landowners, uh, on the Clay County side who are interested in, in wanting to participate, uh, with their properties, and so we, we, uh, we talked about those, um, and are working with those landowners right now, so it's all positive there. On, uh, yesterday afternoon, we did meet, uh, regarding the juvenile, uh, financial, uh, we're kind of wrapping that portion of the project up, and we were supposed to have a regional meeting here now. The April meeting was going to be in May, and now we're not going to have one until July, but we, I did ask that we have this meeting to go forward. Um, we're really wrapping up on this, and, um, I'm pleased to tell the board, based on that, uh, the, the, the non-secure portion of the, of the project, um, now is, those numbers are pretty close to being finalized, and it looks like we will come in about fifty-eight, fifty-nine thousand dollars, um, uh, over what, in other words, our expenditures are less than what we had, had, uh, budgeted for. Um, so we're to the good on the, uh, on the non-secure. Uh, this, we can't say the same about the secure. However, um, with some additional work that's being done, and, and one was to, uh, include some gym floor issues, this project did some serious damage to the gym floor, and so we talked yesterday and determined that we should probably just get that resolved as part of this project. And so when that's complete, along with some other incidentals, we're, we're going to be about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars expenditures over what we originally had for, um, uh, revenues and bond sales and all of that type of thing. So if you recall what we've been reporting all along, that number is, is quite a bit less than that, that worst-case scenario that we had presented a while back. I think that number suggested that it could go up to four hundred and fifty-some thousand. So we're in really good shape, and, and, um, and so the hundred and seventy-five thousand, the plan will be to take those funds from the two thousand eighteen revenues over expenditures to cover that. So the net result is there will be no cash request from any member county. We'll have, we'll have the, all the funds. As a matter of fact, there will still be revenues over expenditures from two thousand and eighteen left over. And then there's going to be more good news coming as we move forward. The, the revenues, uh, over expenditures for, um, the current year, uh, or for two thousand and nineteen, we're looking at, uh, some extremely good revenues over expenditures, and it has to do with, uh, our abilities that where we brought in non-member revenue, and we've talked about that early on and how that, that's going to work moving forward. And so we're really seeing, what we're really seeing is moving forward, now that, when this is fully operational, how the non-member revenues through the programming that we offer in this facility, it's going to really help reduce the total costs of operations for all of our members. Um, they, I, I mean, the, the early numbers are, we're talking about, we might see eight hundred thousand dollars revenues over expenditures. And so we'll, you know, so we'll work with our member counties, we'll, we'll take a portion of that, and we'll probably want to keep a little bit of it in reserves, a portion of it in reserves, and a portion of it will buy down our local shares, and then we even, will even still see, uh, the potential for even more additional revenues, or we might be able to project even more revenues, uh, moving forward, so. It's, uh, overall, it's going to be a, a really net positive thing for...
Is there potential with those non-member counties to come, to come members, or?
Well, we've had, we've had that discussion, and, and there, we're somewhat reluctant to want to do that at this point in time. Uh, you know... to do that at this point in time, you know, because right now, for example, moving forward, Commissioner Gross, we're, it's going to have a 63-bed capacity. And, and even right now, we're not licensed to that yet, but we're going to get there. We'll get there, but, which means we just might have to adjust a little bit of staffing, but, but right now, we're already in the 40s. And so, and, and we don't want to get to the point where by bringing in more members, we reach that, we get up to that capacity where you could potentially end up having to turn current members away again and we don't want to get into that position. And the other, the other part about it is, is our revenues are better coming in as, from them being non-membered because they pay a more significant rate.
We've had a lot of discussions about, you know, whether we would take on any new members and I think the consensus has pretty much been that it's probably not a good idea to do that because we may end up, like Kevin said, getting back to the situation we had before where we don't have the capacity we need to accommodate all the members. And so, you know, sticking with our membership now is working pretty well. We've got it set up financially where it's, you know, cost-effective to pay for that and so any additional revenue we bring in from non-members just benefits all the members. And, and we had, you know, over the years, we've had people that left, you know, and so, you know, now, now they want, you know, if they, it's, it wouldn't really work well for the membership right now to bring in any new members, so.
Oh, so that, I guess that concludes my report.
Okay. For myself, I had Highway Tracking and mostly items we've already discussed at, at our regular meeting here today. And the only thing I was going to talk about, that Glendon Turn Lane that Kevin was talking about, if you're acquainted with the stoplight there, if you're coming from the west and want to turn down, go south on Park Avenue, you almost got to turn from the left-hand lane to get around there, so. We were working with the state highway, I mean, that was a state highway project and we're working with them to try and fix that situation. And even when you're coming, driving north on Park Avenue to get onto west-going Highway, on Highway 10, you got problems, you almost have to drive over the median to get there. So it's just a situation that's causing truck drivers, bus drivers to really not turn properly because they got to go into another lane to get around that, so sort of a dangerous situation. PIC meeting, which already has been discussed, with the landfill position that we discussed and with the back-to-work policy, we discussed that and that's what we talked about. Also on Wednesday, I had the Wild Rises Watershed Board meeting. There, they talked about ditch cleaning, they talked about the, since that process been going on, halt set that they can remove halt set probably from the FEMA map or trying to get that reduced, I mean, to help those people out on halt sets as far as insurance and stuff like that. So they're all talking about the, the quarters and property on the east-west road giving the halt set, so that process is pretty well discussed. We talked about the one watershed, the one plan, that's still on track. We're going to have a meeting on that on June the 8th. Other than that, I think it was, we talked about the Blue Spring Township and the Green Meadows, so. They also had the election of officers and all the current officers were reelected. Other than that, I also want to report that, if you read the papers and stuff, with the legals, sign-up time for commissioners, we got District One, which is Jim's position, and District Two, which is my position, and District Five, which is Grant's position, are open for election this year. I already got mine done earlier this morning, signed up, so. Everybody else in the county, if you're interested, you got till June 2nd to sign up. Anything else? Oh, Steve's, yes, we got, he's here too, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Tuesday, I attended both the Highway Tracking and PIC meeting, which have been covered by our commissioners. That afternoon, I met with Miranda Porter. As you may recall, she's had some discussions about, on the state level, with the challenges of opioid, issues that we're having at, at the state, that, that the state of Minnesota has begun collecting fee for, from the opioid, opioid, opioid sales and, and helps, in hopes of distributing those funds throughout the county. She was notified this past week that the state has made some potential allocations for that and so we're going to be having further discussions, I think, here later today at the PIC in hopes of dealing, better dealing with, with that issue in the coming. On the 13th, I met with Georgia and Joe on some maintenance and custodial department issues. On the 13th, I met, we met with Eric Dodds and looked with our, in relationship to the operations of our MCC JPA, if there's some different procedures that we could mirror that are being utilized in the Cass County Joint Water Board. And so that'll be something that we'll probably have further discussions on moving forward. That afternoon, I also attended the Red River Dispatch virtual meeting with, with Sheriff Empting, Chief Deputy Lansum, and Shannon Monroe. And they continue to be challenged in the dispatch center with, with having adequate staffing and space to meet the increased demands and so they had, had some discussions there. They did approve a budget for 2021, but the, the conversations on staff and, and a potential new home for the dispatch center will continue to go forward. Again, met on the 14th, we met with Commissioner Campbell and Mullerjo in regards to the Buffalo Red. It's been discussed. On the 14th that morning, we had, we met with management. One of the things that I did fail to mention, we talked about our reopening, reopening policy, AMC has been a great resource throughout this COVID process and we have kind of a, we have a web, webpage that we're able to share and talk about some of the challenges that we're seeing. The, the policy, our, our return to work policy, I did upload that. We worked on it at the PIC and with Kathy, Kathy's directive and Gabe's help. And AMC was so impressed with it, they, on Thursday, we participated in a webinar for, for not only the state association but national association to kind of talk about the process that, that our group went through and getting to the final steps that we wrapped. On the 14th, I also had a series of meetings that have been discussed with James O'Donnell, calling him at the meeting yesterday. Met with Joe Wilson on some jail project issues and, and so we'll have, we'll be wrapping that up here with landscaping here hopefully by, by early June. We made the decision, the final decision to, to postpone the Leadership Academy. We only were able to have one session before the COVID, COVID pandemic hit and so we're going to not, we've been canceling month to month, we're going to look till, till September at this point and see where we are at that point. I received a request prior to our COVID pandemic outbreak, we had scheduled a meeting with the City of Moorhead to talk about some of our, our shared space issues. That meeting was canceled due to, to the pandemic. The City of Moorhead reached out this week and wanted to ask if there was any interest from our county, our board, at this point, to, to reschedule that meeting. So I stated that I would bring that up for some discussion.
Okay, and I rescheduled that meeting with Moorhead on space requirements. My thoughts were that after having this COVID situation, people working from home, I was just wondering whether we, as a board or whatever, and with the managers, should discuss a little bit more, do we need the extra space or can we look at working from home? And I think that's a big thing now. I mean, we, before we decided, no, we can't do that because we can't work from home. But it is, I mean, in some situations, and I don't know which ones they are, it's probably working out pretty good that you can work from home. I mean, there's got to be supervision either way, you know, so I don't know where you're better off, working from home or if you're working in closed quarters, is your working conditions good that you can get work done or not? So I think we really have to reevaluate that before we're ready to move on to say, yeah, we need more space or not, so that's my thoughts.
Commissioner, I, I agree with that entirely. I, I think we, we need to do a total review of, you know, if there, if there's any positives that, that maybe have come out of this time that we've been shut down is, is, is maybe bricks and mortar aren't as important in terms of satisfying our space needs, you know, so I, I do think we need to review that and I think, I think the way times have changed and with technology, I think, I, the one thing that I really think that we need to do and, and maybe through our administrator, as we, as we review that now, that we, through our administrator and maybe HR, you know, I think, I think the one thing as elected people that we always want to make sure of is, is the accountability piece, you know, so that when we have people working from home, are they working from home? You know, so I, you know, I think, you know, that's, that's good management in any, in any area. And so how we come up with or what's out there available to us and what, what are the processes for the accountability piece? I think we need to hear about that, you know, as, as we go through this process. But I agree with you 100% that now is not the time to be planning for building. I think we need to look at all of our, all of the alternatives.
Yeah, I think we'd have to also work with Clyde McCarthy to see, can we put that stuff on hold for a while before we move on, I think, so.
Can you remind me, were the, is it, are they the ones wanting the meeting? Are they wanting?
The City of Moorhead has requested, yeah, that we have, have a meeting to, to discuss that.
I guess I'm not, I agree. I think it is a time to kind of break check and evaluate exactly what we need, but I, you know, I certainly don't think we should close the door to hearing what, what they're...
Well, I don't plan on, I just want to reevaluate what we need before we go into a meeting.
Right, but, you know, I, I would be open to meeting with them if that's what the board wanted, but I also think that we're in a process where, where we may have thought we knew what we needed and it's significantly different than it was two, two or three months ago.
Yeah, and I guess I, you know, I agree with, with that, but I still think that, that this building, you know, that the needs probably aren't going to change and that this would just be a justice center. But what our needs, you know, are for additional space may have changed significantly and so, so what we originally planned maybe would be considerably less than, you know, for what we need now, so.
That's right, too. I mean, a big thing, this is on the justice center, how much more space do they need, you know? How many more courtrooms will they have or need for, you know, and stuff? So, I mean, that means some of the, the offices that are in here are going to be, get pushed out, we got to have a place to put them. I don't know if that helps you.
Well, does the board want to meet?
Yeah, I guess, yep.
I guess that's.
Okay.
Well, if they, I, I think we, you know, I think we should, I think, you know, maybe, maybe later, let's see how things go here. And because I think, you know, when we do that, we probably want to have a face-to-face meeting with them, so I guess hopefully by the end of the summer or something, we'll be in that position, so let's.
I don't, I, I can go along easily with having a meeting with them, you know, but for us to have definite plans of what we need right now, I don't, I don't think we're ready with that, so. But we can find out what they want, they, they're probably ready.
Does it, they have a timeline proposed?
Well, they, they had requested, actually, they'd like to meet June 8th. And that would have been a virtual, a virtual meeting.
A virtual meeting is going to be very tough as far as I'm concerned.
That's what I think, to discuss something like this, so.
So if it's going to be a virtual meeting, I just assume put it off, my feeling.
Well, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just, I really don't, I agree, we're in a change that you, needs in this building, we have to address sooner rather than later because it hurts. And if they have a pitch, I have no problem calling in on the 8th to hear what their pitch is.
Well, if someone wants to meet June the 8th, come up with a motion or whatever.
I, you know, I, I think, I think with this, with this COVID and what, what we're seeing, you know, I, I agree with, with what Commissioner Wayland said, that there's, it's clear that at some point in time, this, this building is going to become a, a justice center. That, that part is, as we grow, crime probably isn't going to go down, you know? But having said that, part of our original plan, we had a couple of different proposed options that came from Clyde McCarthy and one of them was with the needs that we have in the Family Service Center. And, and there's an awful lot of things that, that we might be able to do administratively that would alter all of that. And, you know, if, if the city wants to, wants to meet and, and suggest, you know, suggest what their needs are and so on, future planning, if there was, if there could be something joint, so be it. But I don't, I for one, as a commissioner, am not interested in doing anything with, you know, within making decisions on what Clay County is going to do within the next three to six months. I just, I just think that there's an awful lot of reviewing and changes that we can do and I, I don't think it's going to hurt for us to wait to meet with the city. I, I don't think it's saying that we're not going to listen or, or potentially plan with them, but I, I do agree with Frank that I think those meetings are, are going to be better off and more productive when we can, when you can sit down face-to-face and have those negotiations and those discussions.
Steve, when did you last talk to them?
I haven't heard from the city manager since last week.
Yeah, because that's changing too, so maybe they have different plans. Maybe you want to, before we decide, maybe you want to have another discussion with them and tell them what some of our concerns are and that we prefer to have a face-to-face meeting if possible and then we can discuss it again next week, I guess, and see what, see if they have anything more specific.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And just a couple, a couple more things here. I did receive notice or email last, last evening from the Department of Corrections. As the board may recall, the STS crew has, has not been providing, has not been getting together, Mark Dibble has been, has been working with Joe and, and doing projects and helping with our sanitation piece, but as far as community groups or, or, or the crew coming out of our correctional facility, we haven't been doing that since March 18th. We were notified last night that beginning June 1st, that STS crews, with our county board approval, will be able to begin resuming operations with limited crews, they're talking about crews of two. I've talked, talked with Janelle Chaney and then heard from Julie. Julie right now is not interested in, in participating in, in that because once someone leaves, once an inmate leaves the jail, they're, they end up being, having to go into isolation for 10 days. And so they're, they're, they're not looking to do that at this point, but it does sound like there would be some community members that would be able to participate with Mark from time to time. Again, they would be required to follow the governor's executive order following this guidelines. And so the request, I guess, this morning for this board would be whether or not you would approve, approve the STS crew going back to work.
I'll make a motion to approve that as long as you work with staff to make sure that's what they need.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, the STS crew going again, a motion by Janice, second by. Kevin, any further discussion?
Well, you know, I, I think, I think there's, you know, there's always the, you know, I can, I can, I certainly understand our jail administrators' concerns about going out and going back in there and, you know, so I, but I also think that there, there are also other instances where somebody sentenced might not necessarily include jail time, but it might be, you know, community service. And those, those people, they're going to be staying at home anyway and they have to pay off a fine or whatever and this might be an opportunity for them to, to use that method and, and at the same point in time, we're getting things done that are needed to be done in this community, so, yeah, I, I agree, I think we should go forward.
Okay, we've got a motion, any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Post-motion passes.
All right, just two quick things. All right, just two quick things, the board of adjustments plan, commissioner meeting virtually again this evening, you can check the website out to, to participate in that meeting. And next weekend, it's budget time, we'll be bringing forward a proposed timeline for the board to consider and we'll get, be starting that soon. I conclude my report.
Any else or anybody? We're adjourned.